The solving city council, March 11th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Could I get a call to order?
Councilmember Clark?
Present.
DeArness is absent. Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Wait.
Here.
Mayor Toussaint?
Here.
Robert, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please. Do we stand up? Put your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I have a presentation here. First one, I'd actually like to go a little bit out of order just because one of the employees we have a proclamation for is not actually here. So we'd just like to recognize that Mike began his career at the city working in the Parks Maintenance Department, eventually transferring to the Water Department before returning to the Parks and Recreation Department, serving until 25 years in the city. We appreciate his dedication to the city and wish him the best in his new adventure. We also have another proclamation for Karen Palmer regarding the pilot program for compassion, gratitude, and kindness and peace education. So read the, should we read the proclamation first or do you want to do the presentation first? Proclamation, okay. So proclamation of the City Council of the City of solving in support of kindness initiative. Whereas the City of solving voted to pursue designation as a world kindness city on June 11th, 2018. Whereas for a city to be considered for international endorsement as a world kindness city slash destination, the city must actively support kindness initiatives and programs and meet several kindness performance indicators and whereas Karen Palmer is designated as the City of solving's goodwill ambassador for kindness and whereas the goodwill ambassador intends to initiate a pilot program for year-long compassion, gratitude, kindness, and peace education on behalf of the City of solving. And whereas the great kindness challenge program will educate kindergarten through fifth grade with empathy, music, art, and creativity to cultivate compassion, kindness, and gratitude, and will combat bullying and whereas the goodwill ambassador has held a harmony week to help children learn how to be inclusive and will be holding events such as being kind to the earth field trips, the golden rule day, good deeds week, and 11 days of global unity. And whereas solving recognizes that the goodwill ambassador is performing this work in effort to help gain the City of solving's status as a world kindness city. And now therefore it will be resolved by the City Council of the City of solving that the City Council supports the goodwill ambassador in her pilot program and kindness initiatives and continues to desire to obtain the status as a world kindness city. So with that, I have this proclamation for Karen Palmer. And do take it down.
Stand up. I don't know what to do. Thank you.
Can you go back, Brian?
Yeah. Oh, you want a picture?
I'll picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, Karen, if you'd like to, I think you had a presentation that you wanted to show here.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, so much. I really appreciate your time and all of your support has been just really, really so helpful in bringing these programs to the schools. I'm so excited to express what our community can do as this ripple effect is happening. So what this presentation is, is how can we ripple kindness in our community? Three out of five children are afraid to go to school or to tell their parents or their teachers that they're being bullied. Did you know that a child every seven seconds in the United States is bullied? One out of four students will be abused verbally and physically by another youth. Oops, I'm supposed to go next, right? I thought it was on, okay. So I'm one of the national kindness leaders for the United States. We have 30 of us right now that are working to help bring kindness as an education to many different places all over the United States. World Kindness USA and us becoming a world kindness city, we have certain criteria that needs to be established to be known as an internationally compassionate and world kindness city. So I've been going to the schools and I've been working with the children. I've been talking to them about the importance of being kind to one another and having a compassionate heart. This has been incredible. The results have been amazing. The students and the teachers are really, really responding to this. We're seeing incredible results. As your goodwill ambassador, I also organized World Kindness Day where we acknowledged our kindness leaders and gave kindness awards. We had a kindness concert and local musicians donating their times and talent. We gave the leaders the recognition that they needed. World Kindness Day was a huge success. We had a community filled sing-alongs and dancing together and talking about how we can have more kindness in our community. We heard from elementary school students talking about what kindness means to them, the essays that they've written, and what they've learned, and how they can prevent bullying in their school. Did you know an act of kindness decreases stress, boosts happiness, lowers your blood pressure, and increases self-worth? It inspires more kindness and improves immune systems, also decreasing depression and loneliness. Why kindness? Because our world really needs it and solving can be a prototype of what's possible and we have a really great opportunity here. Bullying in society has become an overwhelming social crisis. Studies show that kids who are bullied have lower grades, less participation, they lack quality friendships, and they have lower self-esteem and confidence. 280,000 students are physically attacked in secondary school each month. Two-thirds of the students who were bullied become bullies. In schools where kindness programs are, bullying has become reduced by 50%. This is the answer. World Kindness USA is launching on the back of a 20-year international campaign. World Kindness USA launched in 2018 and in June, solving requested to be a world kindness city and signed the Declaration of Kindness. I went to the launch in Long Beach on behalf of the City of solving and accepted a certificate of City of solving being one of the founding members of World Kindness USA. I've been working diligently in senior programs. I've been working with children and we're working to create a community garden at the Botanic Gardens. We're going to have a kindness community garden. We're also going to have environmental education programs, community events, and field trips. So I wanted to share with you the, some of the events that are going to be happening out at the Botanic Gardens and also some of the papers that the children have written. Again, we have seen incredible results with this pilot program. I was at the Ferry Festival as Miss Kindness, reading stories and helping the children to sign peace and kindness pledges. They really want these kindness programs in their schools and the teachers really want that too. The teachers are collaborating with me and working together. I've been able to bring these as a program that includes the state standardized curriculum, helping children with their reading standards for literature, their reading standards for foundational skills, their writing standards, speaking and listening standards, language standards. The children are excelling academically too. This program is incredible. It has been something that I've wanted to see in the schools for a long time. My daughter was bullied very severely and I really had to convince her to have confidence in people again. And by teaching her about having self-confidence, the bullying stopped. It stops when these kids know how to navigate their own emotions. If they don't know how to navigate their own emotions, they get confused. The teachers absolutely love these programs. The superintendent has been very supportive and solving school really wants this. As you can see, the children are learning how to communicate with compassion. They're learning how to see each other as just like me. They're seeing that there's more in common than differences. And volunteering is another answer to our community. The effects on kindness programs in communities are amazing. Research has proven that with solving, coming in and doing these volunteer programs, some of the things that are harming our youth are lack of community, unreached educational potential, and low self-esteem. Kindness programs and volunteering solves all of these. Solving School participated in Compassion Games, Survival of the Kindest. We have been able to reach with the Compassion Games, 15 million people served. This year, we decided to join the Great Kindness Challenge along with over 15 million other students. 650 million acts of kindness were done in 2019. So you see kindness is the answer. You see that all of the ways that kindness can be helpful. Researchers have stated today's youth are hurting one another at alarming rates, but 50% of these issues are solved with kindness programs. Kindness and compassion is life-changing and we now know it can be taught and cultivated. The ripple effect of intentional kindness will help solve all of these important issues. If we want to see a kinder and more compassionate world, we need to start in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'd just like to thank you for taking, you know, your leadership and taking this proactive approach to some of the social issues that we're definitely seeing rampant in today's society. With that, does any other council member have any questions or comments for?
Just to comment, just thank you so much. Those, the letters were, were a pleasure to read. I tried to scan through as many as I could. It was great. Thank you very much.
And it's really helping them with their standardized testing too because they have, they have to be ready for these standardized tests and we've been teaching them how to be, have more confidence in their testing skills and how to be more kind to themselves when they're having trouble with an issue with math or reading and to just be more compassionate with each other and themselves. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen.
First of all, I wanted to thank you for all the service that you provided the community. I've seen your work and your actions and they're wonderful. I know that the Danes have a word, I don't know how to pronounce it. It's called Huga? Am I pronouncing that right? Anywhere close?
I've never heard.
And I think it kind of falls in line with what you're talking about. You may want to talk to Esther? No, no. Is it Esther Jacobson?
At the Alderboy?
There might be a way to combine those two ideas.
I'm open to any suggestions. Like I said, I think that what we have here in solving is an amazing opportunity. We could be one of the first compassionate and world kindness cities in the United States.
Well, one of the things that, that I would hope that solving can develop is this greater sense of Huga. I can't pronounce that word. I would like it to personify that concept culturally speaking throughout the community. I hear all the time when tourists, one of the things to say is how wonderful the people are and how helpful we are. I'd like to, you know, expand on that idea. So keep up the good work, see if you can bring in this Huga concept into your, your work too.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. So at this point, we'll move on to public communications. And before we begin, I'd just like to note that I was out of the country at the last council meeting, so I wasn't able to make it. But at that meeting, the council on a 4-0 vote unanimously approved the contract for the new city manager, David Gassaway. And I wanted to publicly state that if I was there, it would have been a 5-0. David has my full support. I think he's the type of city manager we need at this time in our city's history. He comes to us with excellent credentials, a vast background in city and regional planning. He's currently the Director of Community Development for the City of Indian Wells and he's been mentored by some of the finest city managers in the state. So I look forward to having David come aboard early next month, I believe April 8th. This is first starting date, right? I have, I believe, two speaker slips. The first one is Hank Homberg.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Hank Homberg, mayor of solving resident, and I'm a resident who's going to work on being more kind. Thank you for your presentation. I'm here to speak to you about one of the issues that concerns me with regard to public safety. Solving, for the most part, is a really safe town. We have one sheriff's deputy in our contract with the Sheriff's Department, which seems to be okay for some things, but not okay for others. And I wanted to bring to light that we have traffic issues in town here with speeding and a lot of other issues with regard to moving violations. Bulton has a population of 5,200. We have a population of 6,000, not including the tourists or the people that are on 246. Bulton issued 316 moving violation citations last year. Anybody want to take a guess how many solving issued last year?
A lot less.
A lot less? Pretty close?
I thought it was under 100.
Less than 100?
Yeah.
54.
54.
So my request is, because I believe part of your job and the government's job, local government, is public safety. And if there's any way that we could support the Sheriff's Department by opening the contract to having maybe a motor officer work a couple times a month here in town, particularly on Alisal and Chalk Hill where speeds are like 60 miles an hour routinely, you know, we wouldn't have the cost incurred of having a full-time deputy that way. We could just pay overtime maybe for the motor officer that's already in Bulton and perhaps he could work a couple days a week or a couple days a month at least here in town. So that was my request. Maybe you can look into it with the city manager or maybe the lieutenant can answer any more questions if you have them. But I really think there's a need in town. Having been in town here and seeing what's going on with speeding and, and motor violations, I just, I'm looking out for the safety of everybody and particularly my family and people I know who have had some close calls. And I want to also mention unfortunate accident, maybe you were out of the country mayor when the truck hit the two pedestrians crossing the street. It was pretty brutal, but I just want to prevent that kind of thing from happening. We have a lot of close calls in town. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And just as a side note, Rick, I think on our advanced calendar, we have some traffic calming type techniques. So maybe some things could be considered there. Another complaint I've commonly heard of is with the crosswalk, the new one that's in with the blinking lights, it's kind of set in this false sense of security where the other crosswalks don't have it. So it's, we have like a double standard that's here now. So maybe the, we could add that for some possible discussion on the, on that future agenda item. With that, we have Tracy Beard.
Hello, welcome, City Council tonight. Mayor Toussaint and the rest of City Council, I'm here to share with you, when you were at the State of the City, we had a unofficial, I'm going to say fundraiser kind of, or a pledge. And we have $8,000 in pledges that people would like to do a holiday tree. And the chamber has done some exploratory bidding on the items. We've met with Rick, we've met with Parks and Rec, Fred, to see what we need to raise $30,000 is what we would like to do, to gift a tree to the city and we would like to have it put on the agenda for next week or next month, at the end of, in two weeks. And we would like a 20-foot tree and we think that's appropriate that Fred has said to us. So that's one of the things we would like to ask of you tonight as I talk. So that's my first item. My second one is we have a no-smoking ordinance. The chamber has walked over 300 of these around town. We asked that people not smoke. There's only certain parking lots that you smoke in now, so we really ask people to buy that, buy that. We have a letter that went out with Rick, myself, Dawn Dunn from the Tobacco Coordinator Program. So we just wanted to make that, that people knew that this was a now a non-smoking community and that we try to enforce that and we've sent it out to our, we've actually walked it to our community and we've sent it out, you know, to our businesses. The third thing is the bikes workshop is tomorrow night here from 6:00 to 7:30 and we ask all of our citizens and businesses to come tomorrow. On, also, our TV commercial has reached 10 million people on the solving Women's History Month and honoring our women in solving. And the TV station, this is the best commercial they've ever done and they've sold two other spots this month to chambers. So we want to honor our women in solving and our businesswomen and all of our women that work for this agency and everywhere in solving. And we say thank you to you, very much so. And the last thing is we have a boutique that has opened up last Friday and we had over 40 people. So I ask you all to please stop by True Addictions and meet Gladys and Cecil Barbizon and ask them and welcome them to our community, please. They had over 50 guests and we did a ribbon cutting. And this week, Juliet Tripton is moving her business, so we ask you to come on Friday and visit with her. So thank you and thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you very much, Tracy. See, I have no further speaker slips. I would also like to just acknowledge that we have Troop 46 and the Boy Scouts here in the room. And if you guys would like to come up and say anything or introduce yourselves, you're more than welcome to. Not getting that, okay?
Come on, guys, don't be shy.
But it's for your merit badge, right? You have to come to some public service meetings?
Ryan, I was an Eagle Scout for Troop 46, so come on, guys.
You're almost done, right? Actually, I was too, so come on up, guys.
And they're both almost there. Alright, so with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Oh, did we get one? No? I didn't think so.
It's alright.
My name is Jessica Haas.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report and advanced calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, your next City Council meeting will be two weeks from this evening. It'll be the 25th of March. We have a couple of items on that agenda. One is the SP1 list of projects for transportation. We also have the Skit Mesa Lighting and Landscape District Resolution confirming the actual assessments for that subdivision. We will also be having an update on our 2018 Annual Housing Element Progress Report. I know council had some questions regarding some of the housing inventory. We'll be giving a, an update on that report. We also will be having the Yule Fest Christmas Tree fundraiser. Staff has been working with the, the chamber on that and we'll be having an item before the City Council in that regard. Two, two other things I just wanted to mention, the, regarding the traffic, I will be talking to Lieutenant Sway, he's in the back of the room right now, about a possible increase in, in traffic enforcement within the city and taking a look at the contract that we have with the sheriffs with that regard. And we do have a speed trailer. We will take a look at possibly deploying that street, speed trailer along the, the Alisal and Chalk Hill routes, so.
And we're currently rotating those like once a month or something like that with the?
It's a periodic, yes, yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, did you address the, the holiday tree item with?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And that concludes my report.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would look, sorry.
I would like to pull item 3B on the warrants as there is some payments to my employer. Even though I have no direct relation to that, I would like to remove myself from that vote, just so the, any public perception would be.
So for conflict of interest, you will not, when you do vote on the consent agenda tonight, you will not be voting on item B?
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone else like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
If we can just clarify, you're not voting as to all the warrants or just the warrants from your employer?
Just the warrants from my employer.
Yeah. Okay, with that, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second motion.
Create a real call?
Councilmember Wade? Yes. Johnson?
Yes.
DeArness?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes, with the exception of 3B.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes. With that, move on to the regular agenda. Lisa, can we get a readout and staff report on item number four?
Item four, discussion regarding limiting hours of operation. Provide staff with direction on any ordinance changes or other restrictions desired by council to limit the hours of operation of various businesses within the City of solving.
Okay. And Dave, are you giving a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It does say Holly Owen on the staff report, but because I drafted the ordinance, Holly and I discussed it and thought that she would be here in a support role if necessary on the ordinance itself. But in any event, the discussion before you is to provide direction on any ordinance changes or on the restrictions desired to limit the hours of operations on various businesses. As the council's aware, the, over the last several months, there have been members of the public who have raised concerns about the operation of 24-hour businesses within the city, including noise, excessive lighting, and possible criminal activity. And the council gave direction to go ahead and prepare an ordinance and asked that the ordinance be sent to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did consider the ordinance at its February 4th meeting and sent back a recommendation to the council that the council adopt an ordinance regulating the hours of operations between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM with exemptions for for hotel service stations, ATMs and businesses that have a current ABC license to have onsite consumption of alcohol. Uh, I, uh, I'm assuming that that, uh, recommendation is between the hours of ten PM and six AM the next day. The way it's worded on the proposal was to limit the hours between twelve AM and six AM in the ordinance in many cases. But in any event, uh, that's the recommendation. The second recommendation was that there be exemptions to the ordinance to include the C-three zone and businesses involved with fire life and safety, including the hospital and, uh, AMR, uh, the hospital service. And finally, uh, approval of other exemptions to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission, uh, with an appeal to the council. So that's the recommendation from the planning commission. As I note in the staff report, it is within the city council's police power to limit the hours of operation within the city, uh, for various businesses. There are examples, uh, in the staff report regarding those types of businesses already. The draft ordinance does not incorporate the proposed, uh, recommendations from the planning commission because, uh, the council just directed the plan, uh, planning commission to provide its recommendations. Staff has not made any changes to the ordinance. So the, uh, options for you are to go ahead and adopt the, the planning commission's recommendations, uh, or to leave the ordinance as it is, or make such changes to the ordinance as you think are, uh, warranted under the circumstances. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the ordinance. And, uh, Ms. Owen is here as well to answer any questions from the planning commission side.
Are there any questions of staff from the council? Okay. With that, we'll move on to public comment. We have Josh Richman.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Josh Richman. My family owns the Mercantile Shopping Center where New Frontiers is. We're working in earnest to get it completed and open to the public, um, from east to west. Right now it's about half complete. Uh, I'm here because I believe the genesis of this ordinance, um, is our, our putting in CVS Pharmacy adjacent to New Frontiers. CVS Pharmacy came into the city of solving, spoke with Holly Owen or through me to Holly Owen, and went through a sort of a boilerplate list of corporate diligence items that any publicly traded company would do when they're entering a new market. There's a list of, uh, maybe twenty or so items that they asked the, uh, city to confirm whether they existed or not. One of those items was whether twenty-four-hour operations were permitted in solving. And the answer to that was they are permitted. There's nothing in solving. There hasn't been in thirty-eight years anything in solving that has prevented business of, businesses from operating twenty-four hours. I just want to provide a little context, some historical considerations, and some other thoughts for the council to consider when considering this ordinance. We are obviously a landlord in the city. So our interest is in leasing space to businesses. And we are, uh, interested in promoting business and not regulating it to a degree that, uh, that hurts them or makes it more expensive for them to operate. First of all, I'm not aware of any connection between late business operation in solving and crime. I contacted the sheriff's department and the Department of Justice in the state of California, and I have some crime statistics dating back three years. And there's no trend born out of the statistics that suggests anything in solving in the last three years. Any late business, uh, late operating business has contributed to crime. I even have statistics relating to our specific intersection at Alamo Pantato and Mission Drive. Our shop, our shopping center has been there for thirty-eight years. Uh, this issue's never come up before. We used to have a donut shop there that was very popular, opened at five AM. People that commuted to work early often, uh, were out the door lining up at five AM waiting for donuts. That would be prohibited under this ordinance. Solving is the geographic center of the San Ynez Valley and has an opportunity to compete with businesses that would otherwise locate in San Ynez, uh, on the Chumash property or in Buellton. Uh, solving is uniquely located here and can service all of the communities around the valley. And prohibiting nighttime business could potentially put solving at a disadvantage. I believe that the existing regulations on the books, local, uh, county and state are sufficient to address these concerns. Number one, uh, you can't sell beer, wine or liquor between two and six AM, whether it's at a bar, a wine bar, or at a grocery store. Two, the commercial zones in the city already have a list of businesses that require conditional use permits that the planning commission can impose conditions on. Three, project conditions like on ours specifically can, can be creatively drafted to prevent this kind of business in certain neighborhoods. And fourth, in terms of lighting and noise, I, I know the lighting for our project, very strict title twenty-four guidelines on lighting. All of our sightlights are dimmed at night when there's no one around. Uh, there, there would be marginally more lighting if businesses were open late. Uh, in sum, I think the proposed regulation does not address a current or known problem. Two, it imposes unnecessary burden on businesses. Three, the, as drafted, it contains exemptions and exceptions that will end up swallowing the rule. An example is bars or restaurants are exempted. And fourth, uh, I would encourage no action at this time if a late business causes a future nuisance, the council can take it up, take it up at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Charles Werner.
Well, he was much more thorough than I'm going to be, so I don't know that I have much left to say. I'm the president of the solving Chamber of Commerce and our chamber, one of the goals of the chamber is obviously to attract new businesses to the city. And I believe that's a goal of this city council as well. And in general, we're opposed to any regulation that makes it harder to attract new businesses to the city. As Josh said, the more regulations you put on in the city, the more we're going to be at a disadvantage compared to Buellton, San Ynez, or any other community in this valley. As far as I know, there's never been any regulation of business in terms of its hours in this city. And I don't know why you would need such a regulation now. I'm also concerned about several other businesses. Tonight is the first time I heard about some of the exemptions, but what about our bakeries? Every bakery I've ever been the attorney for, they start work at like three in the morning. They have to start prepping. If you're not doing business till six AM, the bakery can't go in there and start work until six AM. Same thing is true of cleaning companies. Cleaning companies always work at night when all the businesses are closed. So how are these people going to get their businesses cleaned at night? And then there's cab drivers, Uber Lyft. We don't have many of those here, but I think we have a few of those here. How are people going to get home if they've been out drinking? So these are all concerns we have as the chamber. We would like you to strongly consider not adopting any such legislation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, with that, we'll bring us back to the, uh, council for discussion and action. Is there anyone that would like to start?
What is the existing, I mean, the existing rules basically, you can have a twenty-four-hour store if you want to, correct?
There's no restriction on it.
So you can have it?
Yes.
How many twenty-four-hour stores do we ha, actually have in the city of solving that run all twenty-four hours?
The only operation I'm aware of that operates on a twenty-four-hour basis is the gas station and it is, um, without an attendant in place. It's just a credit card and, uh, you can use the pumps, but the actual market attached to the service station is not open twenty-four hours.
Okay. So, so that's, that's kind of my feeling is I don't know why we're, I kind of agree. I don't know why we're creating more regulations. I understand maybe the residents have some issues that live right next door to it, but creating more regulation, um, doesn't really make sense to me at this time.
And just to clarify, the, um, ordinance reads, um, there's the, the hours that's open, like, like for retail type business, it wouldn't have impact, cleaning or things like that that happen after hours?
The one concern that I did hear that was raised, to answer your question, no, it wouldn't impact that. There was some concern about deliveries and the way the ordinance was originally drafted, there is a provision that talks about not doing business, uh, or being open to the public or other businesses, um, during those hours. That would impact deliveries and that would be something that if council is interested in allowing that, um, to remove that provision regarding doing, uh, business with other businesses during the hours. Um, so that would allow deliveries to bakeries and so on, if the council is inclined to move towards restricting the hours of any businesses with this ordinance.
Got it.
Question.
Go for it.
Is, is the, uh, the pharmacy, the CVS in Buellton open twenty-four hours? Does anybody know?
No, it's not.
No? That's my last question.
I've come in. Um, I, I don't want to, uh, turn this conversation into strictly a conversation about CVS. But, um, in general, for, you know, in any business for twenty-four-hour operation. And I think, you know, with our, um, changing demographics and increase in population and different demands, um, I, I can understand, um, certain businesses wanting to, like a CVS or Rite Aid, wanting to have a twenty-four-hour availability for pharmacy. My concern is, um, we have limited area and the zoning for the twenty-four hour, maybe that's not the best place for a twenty-four-hour business because it's so close to a residential neighborhood, regardless of the type of business, but it's just because it's so close to a residential area, which, you know, you'd have traffic and light and, um,
Just so I can clarify, uh, so I understand what you're saying. I think you're, you're trying to express that your concern is a twenty-four-hour business in solving and the proximity that homes are
Yes.
to residential, or, I mean, to commercial, um, that you see, uh, twenty-four-hour operations being kind of a nuisance to a lot of our residents.
In that certain situation, yes.
And, and that is what I have heard as well is that somebody told me today they, they thought it was, we're heading down the road to Temecula, I heard. Because they, we've never had a, a twenty-four-hour store and now we're going to start looking like other towns like that. And solving is special because we do things differently and people want to keep solving, solving. And not just become Lompoc or Buellton or some other town. And by having twenty-four-hour stores, they feel that's what, that's where we're going. So I'm just reiterating.
So it's just kind of like, kind of like our ordinance, uh, stopping big brand stores from coming into, um, uh, into solving TRC, right? Chris, did you have anything else? Nothing? With that, do we have any, uh, any direction anyone would like to give? Or I guess one of my, my other questions is there's, I think, a couple of recommendations here. One is in the ordinance that was originally written by, uh, our attorney, Dave Fleishman. And then there is the, um, planning commission recommendation, right?
That's correct. And there, if I can highlight the differences for you between the planning commission's recommendation and the ordinance as drafted. The ordinance as drafted, if you take a look at subsection six dash two dash eight B, uh, and this is on page fifty-one of your agenda packet, um, it says that it's unlawful for any business whose primary public entrance is located within five hundred feet, et cetera, to conduct businesses, uh, between the hours of twelve AM and six AM of the same day. The planning commission recommended that those hours be switched to ten PM to six AM. So they were recommending a more restrictive, uh, number of hours than what had been drafted before. Um, obviously there are exemptions to hotels, service stations and businesses that have a current ABC license. I would need to add provisions into the existing, uh, draft ordinance for hotels, uh, and so on, uh, as recommended. The exemptions, uh, to the ordinance to include the C-three zone, that's not currently in the draft ordinance. That would be, uh, Beal Flat area, uh, the, um, down the hill would be an exemption under the planning commission's recommendation as well as the zone, uh, where the hospital and AMR currently located. That, I believe, is a C-two zone. Yeah, um, in any of, in I industrial zone. Okay. So we would have to add something in for that. Um, and then the process of approving other exemptions, uh, to be approved by the planning commission and appeals to the council. That's not in the current ordinance. That would be something that I would need to actually insert to have some kind of provision in there to allow exemptions by the planning commission. Currently, the way the drafting of the existing ordinance was, it was the, uh, city manager who would have that discretion to grant exemptions. And those would obviously be subject to, uh, an appeal to the city council, uh, if you want to put that in there. The planning commission's distinction was that they would be the first one to rule on any exemptions under the, uh, under the ordinance rather than the city manager. So those are the differences that you would have between the two ordinance, or the ordinance and the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. Um, so with that, I mean, I, I'll just say my, I personally tend to kind of side a little bit with some of Karen's concerns on this with regard to, kind of maintaining our, our vision or kind of boutique kind of style, um, setting that we've, um, put here in solving. We have, currently have in the TRC zone, we have an ordinance that actually prevents, um, big box stores from coming in there. That's what, um, you know, we have a few that slipped in like Subway or Domino's before that was created. Um, but that's kind of what keeps that, um, boutique kind of, um, setting that we have here in solving. I think that's a, a pretty good value. Um, so I do, but I do also have some concerns about it. Um, the ordinance, you know, like six AM might be, um, a little bit too late in the morning for some businesses. I could ima, I mean, aren't, don't, several bakeries open up even earlier than six AM, I'd imagine?
Open to the public or open?
Yes, to the public.
I, I am not here that early typically.
Neither, neither am I, so I'm not.
So I, uh,
I am. I haven't seen any businesses that are open before six. The earliest business in the city is Paula's and they open at six AM.
And, and I tried to go down, uh, Mission and look at the businesses and their hours of operation on Google and Yelp to try to come up with the hours for each of the operations. I didn't want to be so over-inclusive. Um, and six AM was the earliest I found. I found a couple that are open until midnight, um, that are not ABC licensed. And so the ones that are ABC licensed, they would accord and go according, uh, I think, um, manner in touch, uh, it goes till past midnight, but they are ABC licensed for on sale. So I tried to look as closely as I could at the impact on existing operations, but, um, I don't know the hours of operation of each and every business in the city.
Got it.
So in reality, if, if Rite Aid wanted to, they could be over, open twenty-four hours right now, right?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Could Rite Aid be open twenty-four hours right now if they wanted to? And if they said tomorrow, hey, we want to be open twenty-four hours, boom, they're open twenty-four hours, right?
And there's nothing prohibiting it in, in any of our ordinances at this point. Whether there's a requirement on their, um, development plan, if there was a development plan approved, or if they have, uh, existing CCNRs, uh, for the property. I'm just looking for other types of land use restrictions. There might be something there. I'm not aware of it. But, uh, there's nothing in the city's ordinances specifically that I'm aware of that would prohibit twenty-four-hour operation.
So my, my only thing is I, I wonder why if that's the case, if they're not open for twenty-four hours, obviously I would think that they're not able to make a bunch of money being open twenty-four hours, which is why they're not open twenty-four hours. If they can make money doing it, they'd probably do it. From what you're saying, there's nothing to restrict them from doing that. So I guess what I'm asking is, is CBS, are, are we trying to create a regulation that is just having another regulation that no one's going to even use? Is CBS planning on being open twenty-four hours? I mean, is there a reason they're going to be open twenty-four hours?
I'm trying to not make this about CVS in particular, but just about, um, any business.
Being open twenty-four hours.
If I can also add, I mean, I actually like the planning, the planning commission's recommendation of the, of the midnight to six would be a concession, but I personally don't want any stores because I represent citizens of Solvang and I've heard more people tell me that they don't want stores open in this town twenty-four hours than people who do. In fact, nobody told me they, they knew anybody that did. So that's just what I'm saying.
Well, and it's just one of those things. I mean, you can manage on a proactive basis policies. So, so maybe the, for example, Daniel's, um, concerned today that, you know, there is no business. Well, that's just maybe the market isn't there right now, but that can change anytime. That's up to the free market. So when you're, when you're setting policy, it's not just about reacting. It's also about being proactive and, and it's guiding the city in the direction that you want it to go. And you don't want to, you know, if there's something that you don't want, then you, uh, want to make sure that you address it before it is a problem. That's probably a little bit better way of doing it.
Well, um, I, I like the, um, suggestion and the ideas, uh, of our planning commission. We have an experienced number of individuals on the planning commission that I think, uh, know a lot about this community and what, uh, would be right for this community. And I would go with their recommendation.
I need a clarification. I want to follow up on what Daniel had asked. Currently, there is no law, rule, ordinance that prevents people from working twenty-four hours a day, right? Is that, is that right?
Well, I think the question was whether or not it prohibited operations of businesses. People are free to work twenty-four hours a day.
No, I'm asking, for example, I'm following up on Daniel's comment about Rite Aid. I think that was a good example. Is there anything preventing other company, other businesses like Rite Aid from working twenty-four hours? Is there an ordinance in that respect?
No.
No.
So why do we need one now? It's preventative. So in case in the future. No, I understand that concept. That's the only reason I can come up with. What's, what's the need? What's the driving need right now? Maybe in the future, but nobody's made a strong case as to the need now.
Well, an example would be like, um, just even where we're at today. So if the council, uh, however many years ago decided we're going to allow big box stores in solving, then you're going to see Starbucks, you're going to see, but guess what? When you come to solving, you don't see these things here. And that might, might be a desire by the community to have that more boutique type feel. So it's about what your vision is for solving and what kind of stores you want to attract or not attract. So it's just, we could bring back that ordinance and get rid of that one. But then you're going to start seeing Burger King, Starbucks, this, that, coming down the street. If that's what the council desired, then you could make that change.
But that's not the question here, I mean, you're, you're, I think you're making a leap in logic, saying, if we decide, if the council in the future, some future council decides to bring in big box stores, is that right?
No, what I'm saying is that, what I'm saying is that a prior council didn't want big box stores in solving. So they created that ordinance that restricted that, okay? That's why you don't see that in solving.
And that hasn't changed.
If they didn't do that, I'm sure the market would be here for a Starbucks to exist, for example.
Yeah, I think you're conflating two things. Until we have a big box store, which is capable or desired to be open 24 hours a day, why are we worried about this?
I think in 20 years, there will no, there will be no big box stores left.
Well, that's a whole nother problem.
Welcome to the town of Amazon.
And that may be well true. I, I guess what I'm trying to point out is, I, I, I'm all for less government instead of more government. And this, I, no one's expressed a reason, at least that I can understand, that says, we have a serious problem and we need to do this.
Again, I'm just going to just address managing policy proactively or reactively.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, just in case in the future, I totally understand what you're saying.
So you're doing this as a preventative measure?
It's a preventative measure, exactly. It's not the.
I'm sorry, Rick, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's my understanding that a number of citizens came forward to the City Council in, in the late fall, wintertime, and voiced a concern about having 24-hour operations within the city. And so council directed the city's, city attorney and city staff to try to put together an ordinance and come up with options to address that concern. That came back before the City Council and, and council directed staff to bring that proposal to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission put forward those recommendations that are before you this evening. So to answer your question, Councilmember DeArness, it was a request of the City Council for staff to look into options that could possibly prohibit a 24-hour business.
The previous City Council.
And the previous Planning Commission. Okay.
Again, I would like to take the recommendation of our current Planning Commission. I think they were pretty thorough going over this. And as I said, we have a number of experienced individuals on the Planning Commission. I think that they know, or they have a very good idea of what's best for the city of Salvane and that particular community that's involved in that area. And as I said again, we are not, we are, we have limited space. Perhaps if we wanted to put a particular store or stores with 24-hour operation, that would be in a different area, removed from residential area. That doesn't seem to be the case right now.
Somebody need a motion.
Do you have a motion, Karen?
I, I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation of our Planning Commission.
So with that, I'm willing to support your motion, but the only concerns that I have with that would be, number one, I just noted that the 6:00 AM might be a little bit too late, just in my opinion. And then the other was, I think earlier you mentioned, there was a couple of things that you would need to retweak in there. One was regarding deliveries.
Right. In any event, if you do accept the Planning Commission's recommendations, we'll be bringing back the ordinance in a revised form for first reading. I can't make those revisions on the fly. But in the ordinance that I had drafted, there was a provision that talked about not doing business with members of the public or other businesses during those hours. I can remove the language or other businesses such that deliveries can take place during such hours as, as you believe are appropriate or not have any restrictions on them at all. I was just trying to provide you a discussion point in that ordinance. So there may come to pass that once we prepare a revised ordinance for first reading, you take a look at it and there will be additional tweaks. We're not in a particular hurry to get this done, but obviously, the council would like to get it done expeditiously. And so that's the reason for preparing the entire ordinance the way I did in the first place, so you'd have something to work with.
I just want to make sure some of that feedback would make its way into Karen's motion here. So with that.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
DeArness?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Mayor Touson?
Yes.
Okay, so just to clarify, we'll be bringing back a revised ordinance that incorporates the Planning Commission's recommendations. I was unclear on the motion as to what the opening hour was that would be acceptable. It said the recommendation was 6:00 AM and.
I'd feel more comfortable with 5:00 AM, I just don't see a problem with it, but that's my personal.
Okay, if that's, if that's not the sense of the council, I don't want to put that in, but you were the maker of the motion.
I would accept 5:00.
And is that the understanding of the four who voted yes?
Yes, I would accept 5:00.
Okay.
I would strongly encourage that, yeah.
Okay, 5:00 AM then, thank you.
All right. Let's see, with that, we're on to item number six. Lisa, could I get a, I'm sorry, item number five, could I get a readout and a staff report?
Item five, consideration and recommendation of an ordinance amending solving municipal code section 11-16-4, development plans to require onsite noticing and the use of story polls to illustrate visual impact.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and members of Troop 46. I'm the proud mother of two Eagle Scouts, so I'm glad to see you doing your citizenship in the community merit badge here tonight. Please pay attention, because I know there'll be a test afterwards. We have, we have before you tonight a consideration and a recommendation for the addition of language requiring the use of story polls to illustrate potential impacts in addition of onsite noticing requirements to section 11-16-4, development plans to the solving zoning ordinance. The recommendation is that the City Council review the proposed amendments to Title 11, requiring the use of story polls to illustrate potential impacts and adding onsite noticing requirements to introduce for the first reading by title only the memista Title 11, and also to add a definition of story poll to the zoning ordinance, and to accept the SEQA determination or to provide alternate directions of staff. Just for background, the use of story polls and onsite noticing in the form of a placard has become fairly common in cities across the country and especially in California. For story polls, they're used to build a temporary full-scale representation of proposed structures. They're made usually of temporary materials, wood or PVC pipe. And they're to be constructed within a timeframe that will allow the public to express opinions about that project and to come to public hearings when, when those noticings are available. You have in your staff report a picture of Beulton and their recent implementation of story polls. That was on McMurray Road and right by 246, right behind the Starbucks there, was there for several months. And it gave people an idea of how, of the mass and the scale and the dimensions of, of that building that was, that was to be heard at a public hearing. The second recommendation is to include onsite noticing. I think if you've gone to other jurisdictions, I was just down in the city of Santa Barbara this past weekend and saw the placards up giving notice, the neighborhood notice of an upcoming public hearing. And the kind of action that was going to be discussed at that hearing. So that is the, the second recommendation that, that staff has. The onsite noticing cards and the stakes would be available at the planning department. We would fill them out when, when we got a notice of, when an application was complete. But it would be put up within the timeframe before a public hearing. So the advantages of this is that just some greater transparency for the neighbor, the surrounding neighborhood and for the community at large. Right now, our noticing requirements go out to property owners. And although that's convenient and useful, often what you have is business owners or renters or tenants that surround a new project, who may or may not not have any idea that, that something is being proposed. And this, both these tools will give them an idea of what is coming before them and an opportunity to attend the public hearing notice, or at least give comment before, before that hearing occurs. As we get bigger, as we grow, it's been determined that we, we don't consider annexation a viable option. If that's not the case, then what we will probably be considering is greater density. We'll be considering greater height. Right now, we have a 35-foot height limit in the city. But we're going to be faced with some projects that would possibly ask for a greater height or less setbacks and a greater, an overall greater density within city limits. Each jurisdiction may determine what timeframe is appropriate for, for that advanced noticing. We think that, that a 10-day notice, that window would at least give some people an opportunity to realize that there's a project in their immediate vicinity and for them to respond to that. For, in terms of the packet, I just wanted to let you know that I've included redlined versions of the, the current zoning ordinance and the changes. The changes are indicated in red. I have a definition of story polls I wanted to at least submit to you, because that was not included in the packet. But that really needs to be done to, to make, make a complete submission to you. So here this is. And with that, I, I believe that concludes my staff report. I just wanted to indicate to you that the notice of development on the page 69, that's from the city of Santa Barbara, that's not necessarily what we would be doing, but that's what gives you an example of what, of what would be, what, what the posting would look like. The applicant would not, it would be done at no cost to them and we would be providing that for them. With that, I conclude my staff report and I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the staff report, council?
No questions, no.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is this going to start immediately or is this for next year?
Well, there will be a first reading and that's, and that's tonight. And then there will be a second reading, which, at, at the next meeting. And then there's a 30-day period where that, before it becomes, it becomes law. Is that, is that, do I have that right, David?
That's correct.
It's been a while since I've actually done a zoning ordinance.
And that's assuming there are no changes to the ordinance between the first and second reading. Sometimes that does happen and then you have to do a first reading. But it would be a minimum of 45 days before this actually goes into effect.
So anyone that's in process of building, will they have to do?
No, they would not have to do that.
So it's going forward, any new projects after, okay.
Right, once, once it becomes a part of our, of our ordinance, then that would be the requirement.
I have a question. And what brought this up to begin with, the story polls?
This was, this was a staff-sponsored idea, I'm the planning staff, me in particular. Ordinarily, I take direction from council and I come back to you with what you've requested. But given what I've seen in, in our, in adjacent cities and given the way in which the annexation discussion was, was, turned out. And then also, given what we know about our housing element and what, what we're going to be required to do in terms of rezones and for greater density. I think I've mentioned this before to you all more than once, that that's, that's going to be an ongoing requirement. So for me, this is a, this is a tool for greater transparency and to involve the public. We fielded a lot of questions about why didn't we know about this project? You know, it was, it's so big, it's so close to the street, that kind of thing. And this way, people will, will indeed have an opportunity to get, get some other questions answered. And I really do believe that, that when you limit your public noticing to property owners, that, that does not include, that's, that's not the transparency that I think we would like to have in the, in the future in the city.
How much time would these story polls be required to be there?
It's a, it's a minimum of 10 days. Now, it would just depend on, you know, if, if that, if there was a delay to the project, then, you know, that would take, that, that would take longer and they would stay up longer. But I think we, we're not looking for a permanent structure, we're looking for a replication, an idea of what, of what the, the structure would look like. And that means that we're going to be needing to use materials that probably wouldn't last an entire season. So I think it's realistic to have it up, you know, within that 10-day period. They can, they can put it up earlier if they wish.
And how much would this cost for the developer?
That's not, that, that's, that's on, yeah, it would just depend on the materials they used and the size of the project and the cost of PVC at the time.
So how much would it typically add to the contract, to their project?
No, I, I don't, I didn't.
I can answer that.
Yes, can you?
That quantity, like if you look at something like Beulton, that quantity of PVC with the, the, the flags would be about $300 or $400.
And that was a huge project.
Yes.
And it did blow down. No, we, we don't necessarily want that. But that's, but that's really what, you know, what, what I think is, is helpful to the public at this point.
And how did the public respond to that project in, in Beulton? Do we have any information on that?
I missed that meeting.
Well, I didn't go to it either. I'm just curious, since you're the one who brought it to the attention of the council. Did you go to their meeting and find out what the public?
No, but I did talk to planning director.
And what did they say?
Well, they, they, they brought it forward because they thought that it would be a useful, a useful tool to help the public realize, you know, the, the size and the massing of some of their projects. And they have, they have some pretty big projects going on, so.
Well, I understand the intent, what I'm trying to get at is, what was the public response as a result of the story?
I was not aware, I was, I was not privy to the public response. I'm sure that if that, if that's something that's of interest to you, I can, I can gain that kind of information.
I would like to see it, yeah. Because I assume that's what this is for, is to try and gauge and allow the public to interact with.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'd like to.
I'm talking, I serve the, the citizens of solving and that's my interest, is to bring this forward for, for people who live here and, and.
My concern is, if it just adds delay and cost and the public doesn't seem to care, then why do it? That's my issue here. If the public loves this and they can't wait to get out and they're all fired up about this, great, then let's do it.
I think in the name of transparency, that's very important that we do this and it is.
Let's, can we limit this to questions, because we still have to go out to a public comment?
Okay.
Are there any more questions of the staff report? Okay, with that, we'll go to a public comment. I have no speaker slips on this, is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll take this back to the council for discussion and action. Daniel, would you like to start?
My understanding is that you have, there's a meeting that's going to be happening on the 24th with numerous experts in development and construction and whatnot. So I think that might be a great time to discuss it as well, to get their input on just that, the cost, the public perception, all of that. I also understand that we're going to be redoing a lot of the policies and whatnot associated with the planning department, revamping things, maybe streamlining things with our new city managers. So to me, it seems, it seems like maybe we don't need to add another policy right now. Maybe we can discuss it with them and add it if, if it, if we deem it necessary. I just don't know that we add something on top of all the other stuff.
Well, I have discussed this with, with, with the current planning staff at this point and they're, they're more than willing to do. But we, we figured that we can, we can print out signs and.
Oh, I'm not talking about the planning staff, I'm talking about the, the individuals you're supposed to meet with, all these experts and developers. I'd, I'd love to get their opinion on it. Yeah, on the 25th, correct, you have, you have a meeting set up. And then I, I just know you guys are going through the policies, we're going to go through the general plan, all of that. So to me, it just seems like, why are we adding more onerous rules already on top of something that we might be changing? Not that it won't be put in there, but maybe that's the time to discuss it and put it into the, the, the general rules of, of the town. That's all I'm saying.
Robert?
My comments, I'm, I'm actually rather ambivalent to, to the, the regulations, if you'll call it that. There's about 480 cities in California and there's about 100 that we say know California's jurisdictions using story polls, about 100 on this list, and 80% of those are within a view of the ocean. So if you look at the list that is in here, then 80% of these are all, they have something in common, because they have views of the ocean. People don't want to get their ocean views blocked. I think we have so little space in this town left that it's, and it's not, it's not a big expense, it's, as far as the regulations go. If there was an uproar of the, of the constituents that wanted to see story polls, I'd be all for it. It's just, I'm, like I said, I am absolutely ambivalent to this.
Karen?
Well, you looked at the cities that have the ocean views, we have magnificent mountain views. So I think it's very important for the public to know what is being built and how that might affect their view and the space around them. And as you said yourself, it was a minimal cost. And as you said yourself, it was a minimal cost for that huge project in Buellton, so I, I would go ahead and consider this recommendation.
Can I add too, as well? I'm sorry. And if, I mean, one of my goals for this town, I would like to see our height go up. I'd like to see this town build up, and if that was something that would help in this, then I have no problem with it.
Let Chris speak first, and then I'll let you come up.
I look forward to your comment. Actually, I want to echo Daniel's comments, because I think I'd like to hear from the architects and developers and contractors on March 25th. I'd like to hear their input on this particular issue. I'm still not convinced that the public really is excited or cares about this. If there's a major groundswell of popular support for this, then yeah, I guess we would do it. Yeah, I'm not seeing it there. But that's just, I feel like you do.
So with that, I can let Josh come up and speak for.
Josh has some experience in this kind of stuff.
As a developer, Josh Richmond, have a little experience in the cost. The raw materials for the PVC might be 300 bucks, but you got to pay laborers to put it up, you got to, you got to have guide wires, you got to make sure you're doing it in a safe fashion, so it's not blowing over and hurting people. And I actually believe story polls, I see them, I used to live in San Diego, they did it down there, along the ocean. I find them kind of ineffective, and frankly, quite ugly. For our project, the mercantile here, we did a 3D video rendering that we presented to the planning commission when we did the project, and I can share it with you, it's on YouTube.
I've seen it.
I thought that was an extremely effective way to communicate how the project would look. It showed the perspectives driving down all the different streets, it showed the perspectives from the parking lot looking out at the hills, and it incorporated data from the surrounding geography, so you could see these nearby homes, the hills. And I think in 2019, all the technology we have, I think it's probably more effective to maybe require developers to do computer models and present them in that fashion.
May I ask a question of Josh? So how much did the computer modeling cost you?
It was expensive, but it was actually good for us, because it helped me, as the developer, see what the architect had in his blueprints. And it's hard to see that if you don't, if you're just looking at two dimensions.
I completely agree, and because it was virtual reality, essentially, you could overlay the building, right?
Exactly.
Against the, and people then, the public, would be able to see that.
And I think that's the way the future is going, is maybe putting on.
Of course it is.
VR goggles, I actually have a friend that's working on a tech company in San Francisco, where you're going to put your blueprints on your goggles, and you'll see.
I'm not arguing that point. What I'm suggesting is, I think that is a far more effective way for the public to visualize the project, and to see how that might impact the view, if that's important to them, or the elevation with respect to the other buildings. I think that's a much smarter way to go about it. I don't really see the need for story polling at this point.
And one more comment, I largely attribute, I'm very partial, I think our project is looking very nice, and it's actually quite similar, it's almost identical to the way the posters looked when we put it up, and I largely attribute that to the modeling we did, so you could see the actual materials, you could see the actual height scale, the relationship to the streets, et cetera, so.
Scott, one more question. So essentially, you could create a rather large poster, if you will, and then you could display it near your construction site, so that people could actually see what it would look like in the future.
Yeah, but I think the actually.
It's called an artist rendering.
The 2D models are a bit limited effectiveness, because you're only seeing one vantage point.
No, I get that. What I'm trying to say is, I'm just, I just don't see how the public, I think the public would rather see the visual from the poster board, or from the video.
So let's bring this back to council.
I'm mildly recommending what he's saying.
Okay, do we, I'm sorry, I didn't afford Josh to do it, so I guess, Susan, did you have a comment?
Susan Bott, I noticed the story polls in Buellton were very effective, I thought, and, and it was like one of those wow moments, to see how big this thing was going to be. There's also the point, what Josh is saying about his renderings did not show the actual, where things ended up. And I think we've all mentioned that the buildings actually ended up like 10 feet closer to the curb than, than we had thought they were going to be based on, on their drawings. So I think having an actual story poll structure gives you a more effective outlook, and what you can see, what might really be in the offing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
I just wanted to remind council to it, we were, we were talking about a two-part request tonight, unless that, that can't be bifurcated and handled separately, I would like to have them considered as separate issues. I hear what you're saying about the story polls. It is, you know, it is, it's not been done in solving at this point, but I think onsite noticing is, is a minimal expense, and a way for the surrounding community to be aware of, of the action that is going to be taken on a, on a property. It will cost the developer nothing, and it will, it will increase transparency as to what, what may be pending, and they can, they can either weigh in or not at that point. So that's just staff's recommendation at this point.
Okay. So with that, do we have a desire to bifurcate this item? We can do the, number one, with the story poll issue, and then number two would be the site noticing, right? Okay. So we'll just take this to discussion action over the story polls only. Does anyone else have any further comment? Okay. My, my position of it is, I can understand maybe having story polls for projects of a certain size, or especially if a variance is granted, and things are going to go much higher, or, or a bigger project, you know, but quite frankly, we're 95% built out, and I'm just not seeing, you know, that much kind of activity going on in solving right now. My other concern is about our priorities. So right now, I believe this council has communicated a strong desire to fix a lot of the shortcomings that we're currently having in the planning department. We have a bid for a California code check, we have the design guidelines and the side ordinance, and quite frankly, I'm going to be very hesitant to approve any further changes or additions of policies, you know, around this area, to further complicate or add costs for people going through these projects. So I'm just saying, that's, that's going to be my stance on this. So with that, I will be voting no on this tonight.
Are we making motions for both of the different items?
Yes, so this, so the first motion would be the, we need to take action over just the story polls.
So just for purposes of processing, council, the proposal before you is the proposed ordinance. If you are only interested in doing the onsite noticing, then you would only adopt the ordinance as to section 11-17-4, and you would not adopt 11-? I'm getting the number, 16-4, is that correct, Holly?
I believe so, yes.
So you could ignore the.
16-4.
16-4 is the one that had the story poll requirements, 17-4 had the onsite noticing.
Okay. So do we have a motion regarding 11-16-4 for the story polls?
I move that we reject the story polling, and that we reject 11-16-4.
We're only dealing with the one right now. So make a motion to, that only entails the first, because we bifurcated this?
No, you just, may I, may I say, I'm sorry. You said you can make the motion to adopt 11-17-4 and omit 16-4 in the same motion.
That's correct. There's no need to deny 11-16-4, because the current law does not have that in there. So the only substantive change, if you're interested in doing the onsite noticing, would be to introduce the ordinance 11-17-4 only.
Okay. For the, for the site noticing?
Correct.
Then I move to do what he just said.
Okay, so.
It was a pretty big mouthful.
That is where I'm confused, because if we combine both of them together on a motion where Councilmember Dejornis says he makes a motion to reject the story polls and accept the onsite noticing, that seems contrary to what we're supposed to be considering.
What I was trying to do is produce a motion to just adopt the onsite noticing without discussion of the story polls. If the council is not interested in adopting the story poll requirement, then there's no point in amending the existing 11-16-4. It remains the way it is.
Right.
If you look at the agenda packet on page 62, that's where the red language, or the additional language, has been added for story polls. If the council doesn't want story polls, there is no need to revise chapter 11-16-4. The only revision that would be necessary is to 11-17-4, which deals with public hearing notices, and those changes are on page 65 of your agenda packet.
Yeah, I think what she's trying to say, Dave, is if you combine it, she's unable to vote, for example, no on story polls, and yes onsite, or whatever, you know, so you can get your vote on record, I think. That's what I think.
She wants to be on record.
Of course I want to be on record.
That's what I'm saying. I agree. I think you should be able to.
And I'll just make a further comment. I mean, I feel that this council will be making a grave mistake if they do not approve the use of the story polls for transparency, because I would sure want to know what's being built in front of my place. And I think it's, I love the technical ideas from, from Josh, but our community, that's simply isn't a possibility at this point in time, unless we can get everyone that's affected in a room together to look at what's going on. So maybe in the future, that would be excellent, but this is, this is not that type of a demographic at this point. The story polls, easier to see, right there, black and white.
So you're saying people can't go to YouTube and watch something?
So any, so Chris, we can, we can entertain, I think, can we bifurcate this and have two different motions, just so that council members can vote the way they want?
Yes, what I would suggest is that if the council is interested in going on record, go ahead and reject the revisions to 11-16-4. Give staff direction, make no revisions to 11-16-4. Then a separate motion, first reading of the ordinance to adopt a change to 11-17-4 to include the public noticing requirements. You could have two separate motions for that purpose. One would be direction to staff, the other one would be first introduction of an ordinance.
Okay. So with that, maybe, Chris, you could restructure your motion.
I'd like to, but it's too complicated.
No, it's not.
That's what he said. In other words, I'd like to go ahead and bifurcate it, so we can go ahead and accept 11-17-4.
I will make a motion.
11-17-4?
I will make a motion to reject the revisions for 11-16-4.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, can we hear a roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Dejornis?
Yes.
Wade?
No.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes. Okay. Do we have, yep.
I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance for 11-17-4.
Do we have a second to that?
Yes, I am seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, can we hear a roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Dejornis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and bring back that ordinance on second reading at the next meeting.
With that, we're going to move on to item number six, council member reports. Does anyone have any committees to report out on?
My committee is not, I'm sorry, my committee is not on his library, oh, it is, I'm sorry. I just had a brief meeting with Carrie at the, during the library sale, and I look forward to working with her very much.
Okay. Daniel, did you have any committees? No?
I had some meetings, but nothing to report on right now.
Chris?
Daniel and I met with a member of the Chumash tribe. We discussed ways in which solving and the tribe can work together for marketing purposes and to increase tourism. It was very productive, and we look forward to another meeting with Kenny Khan, the tribal leader, on March 29th.
Okay. Karen?
All of my meetings are coming up this week.
Okay. Oh, you know, we did have that one discussion with, was it Margie, with SB CAG?
We haven't met, I have my, the SB CAG meeting's coming up, so is the APC and the North County Government.
Got it, okay.
Meeting, it's all coming up this week.
All right, so then, as for me, I had, Chris and I, we went to a joint wastewater meeting with Santina CSD. Not too much really to report on it, it was more of a introductory meeting with the new members over there, and I think I'm the only non-new member on that committee. Otherwise, I think it went fairly well, but probably needed to look at getting something sooner on the agenda for another meeting with them, just because it felt like it was a little bit bumpy. And we do want to find ways to work better together, especially with the upcoming cost that we're going to have regarding the new wastewater treatment plant, things like that. It's noted that Santina CSD has a much smaller reserves than what solving does, so some of those bigger bills can be a little bit harder for them to swallow. Let's see, we also had the League of California Cities Dinner that Chris and I was able to attend in Carpinteria. A lot of fresh new faces that were there, so it was fun to meet new people, and of course, spend time with our regional rep, Dave Mollnax, kind of learn what's going on at the league, and things to keep posted on. Another idea that came out of it was approached with Dave about possibly having one of those meetings here in solving, since usually they're decently far, probably, you know, nearly 60, 90 miles away from here. So the next meeting's actually going to be in Paso, and then, but what we're looking to do is possibly maybe in March, figure out some kind of arrangement to get a league dinner actually here in solving. So, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Normally, the, the protocol is, they have three, three counties, tri-counties. The last meeting was in Carpinteria, so that would represent the Santa Barbara County. The next meeting will be up in San Luis Obispo County, which will be three months from your last meeting, and then after that will be in Ventura County, three months after that. So then, you're looking at probably nine months from now as being, again, in Santa Barbara County.
Got it.
You may want to.
So, and again, these are just my discussions with Dave, and he was actually the one that told me that February or March of next year. So maybe he's planning on doing something, well, that, actually, that is nearly nine months. Yeah, yeah, so that's really what we're looking at, was February or March of next, I'm not talking about next month, I'm talking next year.
Okay.
Of actually sponsoring one of those dinners here in solving, so.
I just wanted to add to what you had said. I talked with Dave as well about the idea of bringing a League of Cities seminar. I know they do seminars all over the state. For example, they, there's one in June, I guess, in Carmel or Monterey, and he had actually liked, he actually liked the idea of doing a two or three-day seminar here, a much, maybe a more regional-focused one, or maybe a topically-focused one, and he thought it was a perfect setting, it was nicely centrally located. So hopefully, we'll get some of that business here in solving.
And he was actually open to that, having a?
Yes.
Like some seminars here? Interesting, okay. All right, is there any more, more report outs? No? Okay. Item number seven, correspondence received by the city council. I think we had one item regarding some. Oh, yes, the PG&E issue is down on Fier, thank you. I guess my only question that I had about that was, is there anything that we can do about it? I, I don't really foresee the situation getting better with PG&E going into chapter 11, but I just also want to make sure that there's nothing on the city's end that has any impact.
We have been in discussions with PG&E representatives, their government affairs regional representative, and he said the bankruptcy filings from PG&E should not cause any type of interruption in power or service to the city of solving or its residents.
Well, and that's, that's what they say, but I guess me, I can look at, are they going to be doing any infrastructure, you know, how is that going to impact their improvement plan, which has an indirect, you know, impact on potentially the service that's provided? But that's just my business sense.
I have one word, Enron.
I would say that they are reassessing their work plan for the next 12 to 14 months right now.
Okay.
And just from a legal standpoint, some of the questions that were raised in that letter is, what could the city do to compel PG&E to provide better service? Because PG&E is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, most of that is preempted at the state level, so. so we're extremely limited on the types of regulations that we could impose on public utility like PG&E.
We're impacted by it as well, and that's why we have that big generator down there to keep our lift station going when I have the outage. Alright, with that, move on to council comments and requests. Daniel, would you like to start?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, no comment. Robert?
I'm good.
Karen?
Yes, I want to make sure that Karen Palmer gets back the nice letters that, kindness letters from the students that were written. And you all should really read them if you have a chance, they're really cute. Couple comments here, let's see. I, after going through a couple of meetings now with the new council here, I would like to bring forward the idea of doing some sort of a council retreat that would cover council conduct, decorum, just various, you know, how you run a meeting, how to address the public. I mean, I think that would be good for all of us, even if I, you know, myself or Ryan, that we've been up here before, and Robert's been on the dais before, too, just a refresher course on that, I think would be very, very helpful. And I'm sure that staff could come up with some sort of a mediator or somebody that does that. So that's my first comment. My second comment is that I really, really hope that when we have our new city manager come on board, that we keep our new city manager in the loop when we meet with our ad hoc committees, and that the manager is aware of when we're going off and meeting with other entities or other government agencies, because it's the manager's responsibility to run the city. And if you look at the flow chart that was handed out to us as to who does what, and who reports to who, and how things work smoothly, if we ourselves go off and meet, and then the manager has no idea that we've met with another public agency or even had an ad hoc committee meeting, they're kind of blindsided. And it could be stuff that they may have already addressed or could address in a different manner, just to have more information about it, because they run the city. So with that in mind, I'm wondering if we can take a look at our ad hoc committees. I have not met with ID one, but I did receive a phone call asking if I might be able to be on that ad hoc committee.
Oh, okay, so, okay, got it. So I think what you're asking is to bring up and possibly reassess the assignments to the current committees. Okay, got it. So you received a phone call from someone at ID number one requesting you to be on the committee?
Yes, and it would make sense, because I'm on the EMA, Groundwater Sustainability Agency, with ID one members already.
Got it. So with that, we'd need nods if we're gonna bring that back up for possible reassignment. I'm okay to rediscuss the assignments, but...
Who is, who is the representatives for ID one?
The Watersub Committee? No.
Or who's on the ad hoc committee, sorry?
Yeah, I believe the ad hoc committee, I think it's Chris and I.
Chris and Ryan? Okay. Are you both interested in leaving, or are you happy where you are? Or otherwise, why are we gonna bring it up? She brought it up. We did put in a request to meet with ID number one. I think Lisa's working on that, right? And we haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. Okay. So I, again, I'm fine with reevaluating. We can certainly discuss it. We can't discuss it here right now, but we would need the nods, and if we don't get the nods, then it's not gonna come up for a discussion. You have my nod?
I have your nod.
Yeah.
I have your nod. I don't have your nod. No?
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have any more? Karen? Okay. And then, Chris?
Right. I've got several things I wanted to type. First of all, I was really impressed with the way the ranking system worked over the last few months, the way we were able to select city council member, city manager, and members of the BAR. I thought it was a very transparent, democratic way of doing it, and it allowed the council to choose candidates that reflect the council's vision. And we were held to account for our votes, and I think that's a good way to go about it. Unfortunately, the planning commission is not designed that way, the way that we select them. And I'd like to move that the council explored a way to do that for the planning commission. I don't know if we have to change the protocol or change the ordinance, but I think it's a better way to go about picking those members. I don't know if I'm supposed to put that on agenda or make a move to do that, but I'd like to see that happen in the future.
Well, if you're, if you have interest in bringing something up for discussion like that, then, for example, some of that that you're bringing up would be underneath the council protocols, right?
Well, specifically with respect to the planning commission, it's actually baked into the municipal code, so there would need to be some discussion about whether or not the city council wants to discuss a revision to the municipal code on the selection of planning commissioners. So that would be something you would have to bring back as a future discussion item, if council members are interested in doing that.
I am.
So you got the nods for that? Okay.
Just to reconfirm, that is reassess the ordinance on the appointment of planning commissioners, bring it back as a discussionary item.
Yeah. You know, another good thing, just to make sure this council gets familiarized with the council protocols and such, maybe we should add that on at the same time, because we can review those protocols.
Go over council protocols?
Yeah, because a lot of that goes over some of the things that even Karen Wade touched on in her comments, so.
Secondly...
Do we have the nods on that?
Yeah, do I have a couple nods on that?
Okay.
Yes.
Alright. And did you have any further comment, Rick? I thought you were just gonna say something else, but sorry.
I've got a couple more. One, I'd like to go back and, I don't know, amend the CAF report. I think Daniel had some comments about how we might be able to add some more information, economic or financial data that would explain or clarify certain things, for example, with respect to CalPERS, the OPEB. I know the guy did, he did the minimum, I think, that was required. As long as we meet the minimum standard, I think that's fine. But I'd like to see more clarification, perhaps add some material, even some links from the state's CAFers related to CalPERS. In other words, CalPERS puts out its own CAFER report, as does OPEB, and there may be some information there that we'd like to put in there to clarify the city's standing in that respect. Also, I'd like to be able to add something to the supplemental, for example, with respect to the grand jury question that came out last year, with respect to solving's position in CalPERS. It would be nice to be able to say, yes, we passed the evaluation, I guess, of our pension system, and that would be in the footnotes as well, for example, in that particular year. And also, I think that we can put some information in there that would help explain the state of the city. The state of the city report comes out, I guess, in January, but there's some great, I think most people would probably go to the CAFER, I did, to try and understand the state of the city, and I think that's a great place to put some of that information in the supplemental part of the report. So I'd like to recommend that the council move to amend the CAFER report to open up this idea and add some stuff to it.
So just so I can clarify, I believe, at the meeting I was absent at, we had the report on the CAFER, and you guys adopted the CAFER. What I'm hearing now is that you wish to add things to the supplemental reports to the CAFER?
I'd like to amend it so that we can add some stuff to it.
Rick?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, when you deal with the CAFER, the CAFER has very strict guidelines that are given down to us from the generally accepted accounting principles, especially when it comes to the GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association. And we have always been told, when I say we, I say city managers, to try to adhere the CAFER to the guidelines, and the notes, you probably could put some things into the notes, if you'd like, towards the end, but I wouldn't, like, if the CAFER is a sixty-five-page document, and normally they're around sixty-five, seventy pages, I wouldn't recommend you change in the middle of the CAFER any of the schedules. If you have to, go take a look at it in the notes section.
Right.
But my recommendation would be to bring this forward to the finance committee, and have the finance committee take a look at it. I believe yourself and Councilmember Johnson are both on the finance committee, and we could see, you know, how you would like that to be handled in dealing with staff. One of the things that would be a concern is if we go, we stray too far away from the general accepted accounting principles when it comes to CAFERS. A lot of the times, if we go to bond financing, they base it off of our financial awards, and if we get financial awards because we're consistent with our reporting requirements, that's a good thing. If we stray too far away and add things that they may not want us to add in there, I would hate for the city not to get the GFOA or the CSMFO award for financial reporting. So what I could do is I could talk to our finance director, have them talk to GFOA and CSMFO, which is the California arm of it, to see what leeway we have putting some more schedules in there as far as the note pages are concerned, and then report back to the finance committee. Because I know we're trying to get a meeting together with the finance committee in the near future.
Okay. So maybe that's something that Chris can meet with you about after and describe what he's looking for in there. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, actually, I just wanted to bring up the upcoming meeting with the Niels Brock Business College students. I know that they're working with the Chamber of Commerce to help them produce a survey of tourist business and guide the chamber in terms of the types of businesses they want to promote and bring to solving. I think they're a great group. They essentially, they start off at the age of sixteen, and I guess they continue on. It's an international program, and the kids can be up to thirty years of age. I'd like to, I'd like the council to support them and work with them any way possible with respect to, perhaps they might even be able to help the council study things like smart cities, because in Denmark, they already have smart city, and they can bring that, what they've learned, what they're doing there, to the council and explain, for example, this is what we're doing, we recommend the council look at this. And they can also help us with our social media outreach to the community. So I think there's a lot of things they can do for the city council, for the businesses, and as well as the community. I'd like to embrace whatever they can bring to the table.
Is this a voluntary group? And then...
So just so you know, Karen, when we had the function at the Elveroi Museum, I think it was about a little over a month ago, there's the Niels Brock students there, and there's probably about thirty of them, and they are living in various places here in the valley and going to our local high school, I believe, right?
This particular group is between the age of sixteen and eighteen, and they're attending the high school.
It was actually pretty, I forgot to report out an item, but it was pretty interesting, because sitting through the presentation is probably about an hour, hour and a half, but a lot of these, you know, kids that are in high school here, you know, you're having to go through the rules of what we have over here, just generally in California. So it's like even the drinking law of twenty-one to them is foreign. I think at some point, I think it was sixteen over there, or at least eighteen. So coming over here and all of a sudden, you know, I can't smoke, I can't drink, I can't, you know, this, it's kind of like, I just imagine what it would feel like, because it just seems like a human thing, that if you're allowed to do it so long, then all of a sudden, you're put in an environment where it's taken away from you, and you can't do that, you know, you must be feeling pretty restrained in some ways. But that was just an interesting experience. But that's what Chris is referring to, and we had, when we met with, who was the lady that was the representative, she has the college?
Well, she's the chancellor. Her name was Anya. I don't remember her last name particularly, but she represents multiple colleges, multiple groups with, I guess there's like five colleges within this greater college. And part of it's based on age, and part of it's based on what they were studying. For example, the International Business Group is a different part of, a different college altogether. So you have this one small college of kids from sixteen to eighteen, or like still in high school, and then another type of, and several other colleges that specialize in different things. And their emphasis is not just typical business programs, but also how do they introduce technology into making, to learning, to applying their business skills more effectively. And what I wanted to do is bring them into, better understand how businesses many times are forced to interact with city governments. It's just, for example, we talked about this tonight, whether you're a contractor or a local business trying to do business in a city, they are going to run into these kinds of ordinances, and then they probably aren't even aware of it. So I think it'd be a good experience for them, and it's all volunteer, it's all good.
So were they expressing interest in getting involved in our local...
Very much so. Anya, the chancellor, had already worked with, essentially, she suggested this group would be the tip of the spear, and they would work with us to identify challenges that we could help study, that they would help study, and then send that information back to their colleagues back in Denmark, which they would form groups, come up with solutions, and then bring, and they would come up with solutions over there and then send them back here and do presentations.
So it sounds like we need to give them some sort of direction, or a project or something, and then work with them to accomplish it and...
That's the direction.
On the tech side of it.
Well, that's the direction.
And that would be awesome, because we don't have a lot of that here at all.
For example, I suggested that they could help some of the businesses do business more effectively, how to, you know, promote tourism or attract new marketing and advertising and sales, because that's what they do, right? And they were all over that. They loved that idea.
So I guess I'm just looking for a direction, you know, for the council. If you're just reporting out, that's one thing. If you're looking to do something with it, just need to get more clarity in it. I see maybe it'd be more appropriate as something that might be, you could probably work with the Chamber of Commerce on. I'll just note that when I, I met with Vicky Connor over the Tenant Mix Study and things like that, and during those interviews, she did actually mention that she is out, she has met with some of the Niels Brock students over, so I'm picking up they have some kind of interest in...
I introduced them to her.
Got it, okay.
And the idea is that there's three different groups in our community. There's the government, where we, for example, would like to explore how smart cities could work for us. They're already doing this in Northern Europe. Why can't we look at it for us here, ourselves here? The second area would be where they help the individual businesses, and she's working with this, they're working with this gal, Vicky, on the Tenant Mix Study, for example. And the third area would be community services. Again, that's another area to be discussed. I haven't gotten into that yet.
Okay, I feel that, I mean, that seems like a wonderful program, but I feel that that falls into the lap of city administration and Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I'm not saying that it's, I think it's a wonderful program, but I don't think that this is something that our council would manage.
Well, you wouldn't, but I am, because I'm on the Economic Development Committee of one. So it was a consequence that came to my attention.
So one thing I was thinking about that, if they're really into this smart city and tech and whatnot, so if something comes before us, say, the lighting at Skip Mesa or something like that, maybe they could look into a possibility of how we could use that to produce, you know, energy that could pay for itself, or, you know, that's the type of high-tech stuff I'm thinking about on a community level, that maybe they can look into that. Maybe they know about it, or...
They do. In fact, we discussed that at length. For example, they mentioned an island called Samso, which is a completely, it's a net-zero island. Apparently, they make all their own energy from solar and wind and that kind of thing. They have, the idea was to bring a lot of the Scandinavian solutions to solving and see if we can't discuss and find a way to implement some of those ideas here. And same thing is true culturally speaking. For example, one of the things that this city used to have, I guess, was the Adderdag School or Adderdag College, and it was, it was a folk school, it was a community center, it was everything in one. And to some degree, they still have that tradition in Europe, especially in Northern Europe, and it has brought those communities closer together. So that's an example where they would help the council and help the businesses and help the community to understand, this is what we're doing, and this is what Danes do. So if you want to be more Danish, then perhaps you might want to look into something like this. So I thought it was a great idea. As the Economic Development guy on the council, I'm more than happy to work with them and guide them. It doesn't take anything else from you guys. I would like them to meet with the mayor, anybody else who would like to meet with them. I think that way, when people see them running around the community, they'll say, oh, I know who they are and how. And the council can vouch for them.
Why don't you have them come and present the council and do a presentation?
I would like that very much. In fact, that was something that...
Would that be appropriate, something that they do with the chamber? We have Tracy here in the audience, I'm just curious if that...
We have Tracy here in the audience, I'm just curious if that's something that.
It's really outside the purview of the chamber.
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay, I think we need a bathroom break first. And I don't think, I think we need the bathroom break now. No? Okay. All right, Tracy.
We're working with Scott Corey, Anya and Mr. Gold. And the students were laying out our project and they are helping us with our project and assisting on a three-point segment of our project of interviewing. They've gone to our listening session and we've listened to them of their ideas, which will be put within our report. And then they will come back and help, a few of them will select students to help be at the May second meeting for the, and only a few of them will. But we did have all twenty-eight students at the, I want to say the Community Retail Speak Out we did.
Got it. Okay, perfect. All right, so with that, we'll take a five-minute bathroom break. All right, so we'll read during the meeting here. Chris, last comment. You had, you said you had one more?
I have one more.
Please make it quick.
Having met with, with different groups in the valley, I'd like to propose that we actually create an ad hoc Economic Development Committee of two. Because there's just, there's so many things that I think the city council needs to explore. For example, we need to explore a, a way to create new special events to be held on maybe a monthly, quarterly basis. And not just for the city of solving, but also in an integrated fashion with the rest of the valley. Things like smart cities, again, that's an economic question. How does that benefit the city, both in terms of the government, the businesses and the community? And then also how do we develop more economic diversity? Because when I talk to the chamber and I sit down with the chamber, they're not really talking about those things yet. They're much more focused on things like the business, the business tenant mix. So these are broader questions that I think an Economic Development Committee could and should address. And I'd like to see that created.
Okay, so with that, I see a concern because I think we had quite a bit of discussion over this before during the committee assignments, the difference between committees and ad hocs and this, that. So in the interest of time and, and moving on, I, I would suggest that, that we take no action on that right now. And in the meantime, you can meet with Rick and possibly go over what you're trying to achieve with that and then better formulate it during the next meeting's council comments. Is that okay?
I would agree with Chris, I think we should have one. I think we should have an ad hoc committee for economic development, so.
Again, we're getting, we're going to get into this discussion over committee and this, that.
Well, at, at the very least, if there's interest in the council, three members or more of the council in discussing whether or not to create this subcommittee, we can put it on a future agenda. And then you can discuss what the parameters of that subcommittee would be. If there's not three nodding heads for that, there's no point in further discussing or putting it on a future agenda.
So I'm okay with discussing it. So you have my nod.
All right. I can meet with Rick and try to define it better for the agenda in the future.
Yes, please. With that, we have my council comments. One, I'd just like to dovetail on Councilmember Waite's thing about the, the council member retreat. I think that'd be a great value. I'd be in high support of that. I also think the most appropriate time to do that would be with our new city manager. I think it'd be a great thing for kind of getting him up to speed, you know, he's, he's going to be moving to a new area, familiarizing himself with a new community. There's a lot of things that have to get done just in terms of him introducing himself to key agencies that we work with and, and people, as well as learning the goals of each individual council member and working with the apartments, et cetera. So certainly will be, as Rick would say, like drinking from a fire hose. So we could certainly work with him on developing some form of retreat and, and I would, I would love to do that. It's got my support. We touched a little bit on, I think Karen touched a little bit on reporting out for ad hocs and stuff like that. One of the things, it actually reminded me of one thing that came up during a meeting with the SANS CSD. They were looking for a little bit more, just a little more advanced notice of what's, what we perceive maybe happening in the future. So for example, if, if even, this is more meant for David Gassaway, but we were thinking if, if even like a quarterly kind of summary, kind of have a, a city manager gives us Friday updates on what happened during the week. If we can give some kind of update that just apprises the manager, the, the general manager over at CSD, what we foresee and the cost going with it within the next quarter, for example. And then also longer-term costs such as a new wastewater treatment plant and just the general timeline of what we are currently feelings for it, that, that might allow them to manage their reserves a little better. Maybe they need to raise water rates. They have also issues, you know, Prop two eighteen, whole nines, whole nine yards. They can't really even increase their rates if they need to and they meet those goals unless they are aware of what the proposal is for the cost they're going to be, you know, having come down the pipe. So those are just some of the things that were discussed there and that was the idea I had. But whatever would possibly accomplish that for them and, and make that situation a little better would be a good thing to add to David's list. Let's see. Okay, so my other thing is regarding our, our ordinance around cannabis. Last year, the city council moved forward with a, with an ordinance about how we're going to handle cannabis within the city of solving. Today, we now have a majority new council that were not part of those deliberations. So I'd, I'd like to get the nods to bring this back up on the agenda for discussion and action. Some of my reasons is it's my understanding that based on conversations with the city manager that some of the applicants technically aren't meeting our requirements because they have not received a LOA or letter of authorization from the landlord. And I felt this could significantly reduce the number of qualified applicants we would see in our pool. So this could have some effects on the overall goals that the council's trying to achieve within the community. You know, or just, just selection process. So that might limit some of our candidates. I also have some concerns about the location, as I've always had reserves about the location which the planning commission recommended to the council. So with that, I would like to bring this back up for, for discussion and action. So I'm looking for nods.
You have my nod.
Okay. With that, I think we've touched on all of it, so we are adjourned.